Welcome to Town Hall, and thank you for attending a Gilbert Public Meeting. Here are a few things to note. The meeting will be held in the council chambers. Should additional seating be needed, you may watch from our lobby. If you would like to speak at today's meeting, you'll find both agendas and speaker cards at the front counter in the lobby. Our staff is here to assist you fill out the cards and find the corresponding agenda items. All speaker cards from the public must be submitted prior to the start of the meeting. The Town Council is committed to providing an environment where everyone's voice is heard during public meetings. In an effort to preserve order and decorum, here are a few rules and guidelines we ask everyone to follow during the meeting. You may bring signs and similar items into the council chambers, but these items may not be held above shoulder height or otherwise obstruct the view or block the path of members of the audience. Disruptions impact the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others, and detract from the purposes of the meeting. Therefore, disruptive behavior, including but not limited to cheering, shouting, booing, or the use of profanity, is prohibited. Applause is only permissible during the presentations and proclamations portion of the agenda. Threats directed toward any individual or group are prohibited. Speakers may not campaign or advocate for or against candidates for office, or ballot issues, or otherwise attempt to influence the outcomes of elections. A full list of meeting rules is displayed at the entrance of the council chambers. During the public hearing portion of the agenda and during communications from citizens, when your name is called, please come forward to the podium, then state your name, your town of residence, and begin speaking. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes. Citizens who are at the meeting and wish to donate their time to a single speaker must fill out an individual card and then combine their speaker cards. In such an event, one person from the group shall be designated to present their remarks, which shall be limited to six minutes. If one speaker is speaking on behalf of others who are present, the mayor or vice mayor shall read into the record the names of those whose time is combined. No person other than the individual speaking shall enter into the discussion. Officials on the dais may not respond to any questions or comments during communications from citizens. However, the council may ask questions during public hearing items. All comments and questions shall be directed through the mayor or presiding officer. Thank you again for attending a Gilbert Town Meeting and for your participation in local government.
Welcome to the August 20th, 2024 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask that everyone please turn off or silence your cell phones and devices in the chamber this evening. I would like to first invite Pastor Thor Strandhold to the podium. He is of Valor Christian Center to offer our invocation this evening. Good evening, Pastor. You have to push one of the buttons there. There we go.
Am I on?
Red is good in this case.
Red is good. Okay. Praise the Lord for red. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the Town Council, and everyone that's in attendance here tonight. You know, I looked up the biblical definition of invocation, and in one version it says in part, "The act of invoking or calling upon a deity for aid, protection, or inspiration, and invocating God's presence beginning at the beginning of a public service or a public meeting." Now, before I speak a blessing over the gathering tonight, I have a couple of facts that I'd like to share with you. I'm a pastor. That's what we do, right? I joined the military in 1964, and I was issued a uniform which identified me as a member of the United States Armed Forces. I took an oath to defend the United States of America against any enemy, foreign or domestic. We had a code of rules and regulations that we had to follow. It's called the UCMJ, the universal code, excuse me, the Uniform Code of Military Justice. There were 149 articles covered, which covered a wide range of offenses and punishments that accompanied them. It let us know that if we get out of line while we're in the service, we have a price to pay. Speaking of the military, General George Washington became the first President of the United States. Of course, we all refer to him fondly as the father of our country. He was sworn in on April 30th, 1789, on the balcony of the Federal Building in New York City, where he laid his hand on an open Bible as he took the oath. At the end of the oath, he added, "So help me God." I was told that at the end of the oath, he also kissed his Bible, closed it up, headed straight for St. Paul's Chapel, which was built in 1766 in the heart of New York, where he fell on his knees and he asked God to give him wisdom and protection to lead our country. He was a very strong believer in the Bible as his source of direction. Kids probably don't know or hear about this in the classes anymore. As a Christian, we too have a code to live by. It's very simple. It's called the Ten Commandments. They are very simple. Number one, thou shalt not commit adultery; thou shalt not steal; thou shalt not kill; honor your Father and your Mother; do not bear false witness, in other words, don't lie; keep the Sabbath holy; have no other gods before me; do not covet, in other words, be jealous of another's goods; do not take the name of the Lord your God in vain; and do not make false idols and worship other gods. When I was a young lad in elementary school, we did very similar to what we're doing here tonight. We had a pledge of allegiance to the flag. The teacher would say a short prayer, and we would begin our school day. We also had a copy of the Ten Commandments hanging on the wall. The teacher didn't read them, but they were there for the students to read at any time. My own personal belief is this, that when they took the Ten Commandments down, childhood rebellion began. No moral rules were there for them to follow. They made it up as they went along. God doesn't change His mind. He's the same yesterday, today, and forever. Any decisions we make in life, whether it's at voting time decision or what we're going to do next in our life, make sure it lines up with the Word of God. That ends my little lesson for today, and I will make my blessing brief. Lord, I pray that you give our Town Council wisdom to make the right decisions concerning our great town. Lord, give them wisdom beyond their years, and I thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Thor.
You're welcome.
For the lesson, and thank you for your service to our country.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you always being available to come and offer an invocation here at our Town Council meetings. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand. I pledge allegiance.
Next, I'd like to ask our town clerk to please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. We have one presentation this evening, the presentation of the Green Gilbert Partnership Program's 2024 new certifications, and Councilmember Kaprowski will be handling that this evening. And if we could ask Erin Fazel from Environmental Compliance to come down to the podium, please. I don't think anybody else is with you, Erin. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me. So my name is Erin Fazel. Like she said, I work for the Environmental Compliance Team for the Town of Gilbert. We also are involved and help oversee the Green Gilbert Program. Just a little background about who we are. We were founded a few years ago as a way to give local businesses in Gilbert an opportunity to show how they care about the environment and all the efforts that they do to show that they care. It's a coordinated effort between four different divisions: Environmental Compliance, Solid Waste and Recycling, Water Conservation, and Wastewater Pretreatment. And we can help businesses prioritize the changes that will have the biggest impact. We work with businesses to increase their sustainability through a tailored approach. We generally try to customize these programs as best we can to adhere to whatever the needs of the business may be. In this past quarter, we've had four new certifications: Free Stone Recreation Center, Arizona Quality Services, Maricopa County Library District, and McQueen Activity Center, and just a little bit about each of those four businesses. Free Stone Recreation Center, if you are not familiar with it, it lies right over by Free Stone Park here in the heart of Gilbert, includes large workout areas, basketball courts, and plenty of other recreational activities that people can come indoors and beat the heat on. Their commitment to their community and maintaining the facility makes us really proud to certify them as a Green Gilbert business partner. EZ Quality Services, they're a consulting firm. They specialize in optimization and manufacturing processes. They're a women-led, family-owned, quality assurance team with decades of experience serving manufacturers and suppliers across the country. They emphasize efficiency and sustainability in their business model while assisting manufacturers in identifying, solving, and preventing delays in their production process. So sustainability is really a big part of their entire business model, and helping businesses become more sustainable is a lot of what they do. Southeast Regional Library, of course, if you haven't been there, lies right next to the Riparian Center. They offer Gilbert community ample resources for many avenues that they may need. Being a library, of course, they have plenty of books and literature for anyone to browse, but they also offer free Wi-Fi for anyone to use, computers specifically for children and those that may have lower literacy, study rooms, and summer camp programs, which you can see me at. I come and do presentations there as well. And visitors, of course, can take advantage of the location, walking through the beautiful Riparian, and then come inside and cool off a little bit to beat the heat. And then lastly, of course, we have our McQueen Activity Center, which offers just a wide array of fun and games for families to bring their kids in the community. It's located just adjacent to McQueen Park, next to a fully stocked lake that you can fish at. It's a great place to go and, again, beat the heat, you know, while we still have it for these next few months. They can host anything that you and your family might be looking to do, from ping pong and volleyball to full-on weddings and large events. And of course, their commitment to their environmental practices, why we are excited to certify them here today. Thank you. And we'll go ahead and proceed with the presentation of the certificates. First, if we could have Char Miller from Southeast Regional Library come up, please. And then next from McQueen, if we could have Stephanie McMillan. And then Brian Book from Free Stone Rec.
Thank you very much. It was really great to see you. Thank you for all you do. We appreciate it and being able to celebrate with you. Next, we will move to our public hearing portion of our agenda. Items will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. I do not have any slips for any of the items on public hearing. Council, would you like to hear anything individually for items two, three, four, or five? I'm seeing shaking heads. I'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing on items two, three, four, and five, and would be happy to entertain a motion if someone would like to make one.
I'll move to accept items two, three, four, and five as written.
I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson. Can I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second.
Sorry, Kathy.
Second by Councilmember Buckley. Councilmember Tilke tried to jump in twice there. And motion passes seven zero. Moving on to the consent calendar, it will pass off to Vice Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. We've only had two items pulled, item seven and item eight, and then item seventeen will be postponed. Therefore, I will make a motion to approve items six, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. Motion passes seven zero.
Item seven, Councilmember Torgerson.
I was hoping to get a quick presentation on seven and then following with eight, but is there anybody that is able to speak on this?
I think, still think we need to put a sticker on those so that we know which button to push to turn them on.
Yeah, did I do it right?
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
Red light means, it's a good thing. Red light means the microphone's on, but we all hesitate because we're not sure which button to push. Good evening, Stephanie.
Good evening. So I am Stephanie Bubenheim. I'm a senior transportation planner with the town. So I'm gonna give a brief presentation on Agenda Item Seven, and then any questions, I can answer them, and then I have a small posse behind me if there's any other questions. So Agenda Item Seven is looking at three separate items. So just a quick breakdown, the first one's the resolution with the Maricopa Association of Governments, MAG, for the EV vehicle charging infrastructure program. And then the second, or B, is agreement between MAG and the town to initiate the project. And then C, the last item, is a general fund contingency in the amount of $25,000. So MF2565 is an EV charging master siting plan. So this came about because we were looking into the MAG program funding and knew that this was coming. So it is a planning-level study that will evaluate locations townwide for future EV infrastructure. So it's looking at, like, big picture, where do we actually need charging? If we need additional charging stations, these are just for public use, so not for fleet. And this will be townwide, like I said. It will prioritize locations from there. So it's gonna be looking at existing EV charging stations and also looking at town-owned property if we do need, if we're interested or do need to put any additional infrastructure in place. And then the last part of this study would be creation of some project sheets. So MAG does have an EV CIP funding opportunity that's coming up. So we'll also kind of narrow down maybe five locations that might meet that criteria if we want to go forward with that funding in the future. That would be a separate council item. So why do we want to apply for this MAG funding? The city of the future that we are following, so we want to anticipate, this is kind of part of our entire transportation network, so we want to look down the avenue of EV charging stations so that we can plan accordingly, and it'll also help us create future infrastructure within the town through CIP projects or any funding opportunities. We also have a Gilbert focus area of exceptionally built environment, so this would go into our transportation network. And then we also have a couple different WIGs for prosperous community and exceptionally built environment that are also meeting our sustainability and our transportation goals. In our 2022 Gilbert Transportation Master Plan, we had an appendix separated for emerging mobility playbook. So it talks about a couple different emerging technologies. One of them is vehicle electrification and some recommended things to look at. I'm gonna look at the middle bullet point, inventory of town-owned parking garages to identify opportunities to incorporate charging stations. So this opportunity with MAG came about, this electric vehicle charging infrastructure program. They had a call for projects in May of 2024. And at the end of May, we did a contingency approval for $95,000 through the town manager's office because of the process that we have internally. And then the next day, we submitted the application. MAG Regional Council approved the EV CIP siting plan project list, and Gilbert was included in that. We received an official award letter July 25th, and then the item before you tonight is that agreement between the town and MAG to administer the project. For special obligations, this funding is from a state source, it's HERF, so there are no additional obligations of ongoing resources beyond the study, and it's not a federal project, so it's not tied to federal requirements that MAG follows. For financial impacts, the C item that was on the agenda is a general fund contingency for $25,000. So this is a CIP admin services, so that's separate from the $95,000 that MAG awarded the town, and that is just part of a process internally. So we will be with the agreement showing that the $95,000, it gets reimbursed over time. So part of that agreement in your agenda has a list of all of the requirements that we have to meet. So that is a quick presentation, and then I can answer questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. We have Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, how is this different from what we voted on a couple of months ago?
Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni. So the other item that was voted on and just took into effect in August was a FAIR study, and it's a policy for the town, for town-owned sites that we're going to charge at charging stations that the town owns. So this is looking at a study separate from that of where in the town do we actually need charging stations? And then looking, kind of, I guess, high level, then taking it a breakdown of seeing what else is existing and seeing what we can put on town property if we want to look on town property, or if we should look into partnering with private, not companies, but private properties.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Torgerson.
All right, so in the end, the, excuse me, the actual cost of the town is 25,000 because 95's reimbursed, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, that is correct.
But the goal of this is to provide services outside of town-owned property, outside of fleet property, for people that are buying electric cars. Is that correct?
This study is to look at areas that could need charging infrastructure, but it's not providing this service. But in the future, there's a potential that it might be on town property, so that the town will be providing the service through the FAIR policy.
So it's not to necessarily find locations to entice somebody to open up a charging station? We're gonna become basically the gas for electric? We're Union 76 for electric in the end?
I couldn't hear the last part.
We're basically a gas station for people with electric cars in the end if we follow through the end of the program, correct?
No, that is incorrect. We are not a gas station. I hear someone behind me. It's looking at where in the town, if we want to put on town property, it's gonna look at townwide, but looking at if it makes sense to put charging stations in our parking garages, if it makes sense to put them at parks or at libraries because we have our own personal property.
But that's for what, our fleet or cars in general?
No, it's for the public.
That's my point. We've become the gas station for the public when it comes to electric cars, if that's the end goal.
So again, that's not the end goal, but we want to do a study to see if we even need charging infrastructure. Right now, we don't have a study or a plan. It's just kind of being put into projects.
Jason, would you like to add something?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember. This is just a study to identify if the town needs to install EV infrastructure, and if so, where it should go. Ultimately, once that study is complete, it will identify locations in the town where it makes sense to install EV infrastructure. Ultimately, the town then can choose to pursue additional funding to build that infrastructure or not. And then ultimately, that information is out there, so if, say, for an example, a private company did want to come in and install EV infrastructure, they could use the same information that we use to identify where to do so.
But it does sound like that's the afterthought, and the forethought is places for us to provide it on possible town-owned property for the public.
The forethought is for us to do a study on where EV infrastructure needs to go, if anywhere within the town.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I think I got this now. So this is a study to decide where they should go, if they should go anywhere, and what we voted on a couple of months ago is a rate study, a rate pilot study, correct? So in essence, they're kind of working together after we get all the information from both studies, and my guess is you would come back to us with any future locations and/or rates at that time.
So that is correct, that the first part of what you said with this study is separate from the FAIR study. It's possible that they could be tied together if this study does recommend sites on town property, and the town goes through and puts in charging stations. That's how they'll be tied together, and then we can come back at a study session and present the findings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I think, yeah, the confusion is that we did just pass the FAIR study to charge for electric charging on town-owned property. If this study comes back in the future and says, "We recommend the town put EV chargers in these four locations," the Town Council could say, "Okay, we like all four of those locations, or we don't like any of those locations." If we did choose, or the council chooses one, two, or all four of the locations, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, then they would fall under the FAIR study that we had done as to how much would be charged for the parking, charging of the electric on town property.
That is correct.
Okay.
And then just to add to that, this study will just recommend where charging stations should be. It doesn't mean that they have to be there. It's more of us kind of pre-planning so that we know what makes sense for the town of if we need to put them in CIP projects or potentially go after funding that comes through.
Mayor, just to add on to that, if the town chooses to move forward with building this EV infrastructure anywhere that's recommended in the study, then the previous plan will kind of dictate how we're charging for people using that infrastructure. So if no infrastructure is built at any of these locations, then the policy doesn't come into play. It's only if we then choose to build infrastructure after this study that then that policy would dictate how we would charge people who utilize that infrastructure.
How we charge for the charging.
Correct.
It looks like Town Manager Baner has his microphone on.
I was just gonna also note, we could also choose to do an RFP at that time and solicit a private party to come in and install infrastructure at that location.
And I should have said that it doesn't mean that the town is necessarily going to build the infrastructure. It could be in other means. It could be in other means. Vice Mayor Anderson? Oh, Councilmember Torgerson, did you still have your mic on, or did you want to speak again?
Yeah, and from what he said, to me, the only acceptable way to go with this is if it ends up with an RFP for a private enterprise to do this. I do not believe any form of government should be in charge of dispersing this, and basically the gasoline, as far as I'm concerned. If it ends up with an RFP, I'm fine. If it doesn't, I'm not fine.
And the study may come back and say, they don't recommend any locations in Gilbert. It may come back and say that they recommend three or four locations in Gilbert, and that's what the council will decide in the future, and then decide if you want to put it out for an RFP. There's options there. We have a lot of residents that are using electric vehicles at this point in time, so I know that, I'm, I'm assuming the study will come back showing recommendations, but again, the council decides what they would like to do in the future. Vice Mayor Anderson?
I was just going to ask that question. I'm assuming that the study will include a comprehensive look at use of electric vehicles in Gilbert or coming through Gilbert, but that'll give us a better idea of whether or not we want to locate these stations in town.
Yes, that is correct. We will be looking.
I wouldn't call them gas stations, they're new stations.
He just referred to it as a station, and I just know you're calling it station. I mean, it, essentially, it is. You're filling up the vehicle, in this case, with electricity.
Charging stations.
Yes. Yeah. Any other questions for Stephanie and Jason? Councilmember Bonjivani?
Thank you, Mayor. So we have no preconceived areas yet. We're going to just tell the, tell them to go out and do the study, correct?
We have no preconceived areas at the moment, but it would be a list of criteria to kind of narrow down.
Okay. The reason I ask that, I, I know we've had discussions about Cooley Station at some point. Would that property or that area be considered in the study also?
At the moment, we are still kind of drafting up the scope, but it's looking at sites that are already developed. So are you referring to the Cooley Station site that the town owns?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that site's not developed at the moment, but we could look into it.
Okay. Electrified, thank you.
Thank you both for your answers to your questions. Would anyone like to attempt a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve items 7A, 7B, and 7C.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Bonjivani. Please vote. Motion passes 6-1 with Councilmember Torgerson dissenting. Back to you, Vice Mayor.
Item 8, Councilmember Torgerson.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up.
Is your mic on?
Sorry. Wanted to follow up, because I had looked at this about five years ago, and I'd just love a presentation from you so I can understand how this has evolved over the last five years.
Do that right? I guess I did. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. For item 8, this is about the cooperative purchasing agreement for Floresco Services, which supports the basically placement of the signs on all of our signalized intersections. So those are those very large signs, they're about eight foot by two foot, and, and this will support basically being able to continue to put those in place by an outside vendor, which is Floresco. See if I can get this. So the town, just a little bit of background, the town has 227 signalized intersections right now. Each of the four-way intersections that we have have illuminated signs. So at each one of those, those poles that are there, the eight illuminated faces of the sign is, is, you know, one on each side of that. So that's what we have. As I mentioned, they are about eight foot by a little over two and a half feet. That's how large they are. In looking at the size of those, as well as looking at kind of the cost of materials, it is very difficult for us to kind of beat an outsourced vendor out there. So we are working with Floresco, and we've used Floresco for many, many ti, many, many years, kind of on a cooperative or an agreement type face to do this. So the life of those signs are about 10 to 15 years. Typically, the, the individuals that go through that will do a bulk replacement, will identify signs that need to be replaced, and will go out kind of on a task order with the supplier to not only supply the sign, but also to install the sign for us at the same time. It is really done based on a budget availability and priority. There has been a little bit of enhancement over the last couple of years to basically replace all the signs on our corridors. What you see here is a blue sign that's in this, this map right here. Previous to that, we had a green sign. And so those green signs now have been, are being replaced individually by the blue signs. The intent is to provide some uniformity across there. The team, the, the town traffic team does do a condition assessment about every four to six months of all of our signalized intersections, identifies where some of those signs need to be replaced. In this picture right here, you're going to see Elliott Trail Crossing. That is a sign that needs to be replaced. And when we do that replacement, we do replace those with, with the blue signs. That is, that is in alignment with our standards. We are and have in the past only replaced maybe 30 to 60 signs annually, but because of the fact that we've now updated the standard, we're seeing some aging in our infrastructure. It's really important for us to enhance doing that, and we would like to basically get all of our signs replaced in like a five to six-year window. So we're working on that right now. So our annual program at this point in time is looking at replacing 280 to 300, 320 signs annually to keep up with, with the changes. Before, we could basically just change one face. We now are needing to basically do both faces and all four of the poles just because of that change and that need to go to uniformity in the way that they look. We are estimating about and, and say that the cost per intersection is about $6,000 to $7,000 per intersection to do all eight face, of those faces in that intersection. That also implies them supplying it. It also allows us to have them do the install and the traffic call when, while they do that. So on a background, we have traditionally been working with a cooperative purchasing contract that came out of the city of Mesa. Cooperative purchasing agreements still require to go out for bid or go out for, you know, a, a, a selection-based competitively bid. Mesa did this recently because their current cooperative that we have been using has ended, and so they were looking to extend that for some time now. And this contract before you today is to look at that extension or addition of a new contract under that new bidding. But they did go out and competitively bid. They look at their biddings in not only the price, but they also look at it from an approach and qualifications. How are they going to do it? How are they going to supply it? Two folks came forward, I think Summit West and Floresco, in that bidding process, and Floresco was awarded the larger, or the larger point in that point system, but they also offered the cheapest price, so that's probably why their points were a little bit higher in that. So tonight, we're asking that you, and recommending that you approve this new contract with some optional two-year extensions on it. Annually, we expect to spend about $300,000, and that's what the contract says before you, with a maximum five-year expenditure of about 1.5 million. And I have my tribe here to help me too if I need. Thank you.
You have a posse? That's what Stephanie said. She had a posse behind her. Any questions?
She's got a lifeline.
A lifeline.
My lifeline, yes.
And this looks different to me than it did five years ago when I was looking at this, from the melting green signs and being in the business. I'm, I'm looking at this, and am I, am I really to understand that we're looking at about 300 signs for, let's call that, what is that, 75? About 35 intersections, 38 intersections, all the way around per year, will be replaced at about $300,000? So 308-foot by two-and-a-half-foot signs.
Correct. And that's...
Two standard.
Yeah, two standard, and it'll be two on each post and on each leg of the intersection.
3M, the whole thing that is, that it's always been, and we're still dealing with, is what materials have changed in the last five years? Because it used to be much higher. What materials have, or have materials for the, the specific materials come down? Because I know Lexan hasn't.
All right. I'm going to bring our traffic ops member, which is Shane Flynn, who is the gentleman who is installing those and doing those. So this is his first council meeting tonight, so please welcome him. Thank you.
Ooh, welcome.
Wait, and Shane?
Welcome, Shane.
The guy I was dealing with before died of a heart attack while he was doing it. Just saying that.
Councilmember Torgerson, don't scare him away. Sorry, Shane, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Can you repeat the question, please?
It's just material costs. I'm looking at, have there been changes in the materials over the last five years? Because I know it's, the materials are actually a federal standard, not something that we do, or even I don't think ADOT does. I believe we have to comply to a federal standard, including the, the prism reflections, et cetera. What materials, if you know, have changed in the last five years?
I'll try and answer to the best of my knowledge. That I know of, I don't think the materials have changed. We're still using Lexan. We're still using a high-quality 3M vinyl. I don't know the reason for the peeling of signs. I think a lot of the signs that we see have been signs that we had in the field for 15 years or so. The problem is, whenever we have storms, wind, rain, as you know, water guns underneath the vinyl, wind and dusk underneath the vinyl, and as it ages, it peels and looks horrible. We're at the point of, we're trying to replace as what we can as fast as we can, but unfortunately, as we have aging infrastructure, it just catches up with us. So as far as materials, I don't think it has changed. As far as my knowledge, I believe it's the same materials that we've been using. I just think, since we have so many signals now, you see on a larger scale, and I think it's the signs that have been out there for 15, 20 years. So the blue signs first started to come out six years ago, they're still in great condition. I have my techs go up there every six months, just check on it. We haven't had any issues. And when we do, we had one sign, Floresco is amazing, they come out and make sure, but a lot of the signs I see peeling, I think they're older. I can't really give you a definite answer on that, just because I haven't been with the town longer than six years, so.
And I'm asking that because as I looked through, through it, budgeting-wise, the cost per unit was down significantly from what it used to be. At least it appeared to be. And, you know, some of these signs are much bigger than 98, six-and-a-half by 28 and a half. Some are tremendously big. But I do, I do understand a lot of the green signs are probably well beyond life expectancy, and any rating means nothing in Arizona when it comes to the sun. I mean, I'm in that business, I know, but I just wanted to hear, make sure I was reading this right, that I can roundabouts, talk about 300 signs up repaired, replaced a year at 300,000.
Yeah. So as far as the cost of the product going down, I don't know anything about that. But what I will tell you is, even though we're using taxpayer dollars, so, there's places where you don't skimp out. And for me, I feel that the signs up there is something you don't, you don't cheap out on. So I make sure we always have the best quality vinyl, Lexan, and so forth. I've never changed it since I've been where my position. Previous supervisors have not changed it since. I don't think the green signs, they've always kept it the same. So I don't, I don't know if the cost going down is due to the contract or what have you. So I don't know how the cost went down.
Well, and you definitely want something like Lexan that's not going to break and come down, because that's deadly. Sir?
Just Mayor, Councilmember. This is, all the values are based off of last year or two. We've seen pretty consistent prices from Floresco. So we do have that in our back pocket, that we're confident in the numbers, the 300,000 that we can accomplish there.
Okay.
And so this would allow us to continue for the next five years or so, based on those numbers, locking in that price.
No, I'm, if I'm, you're reinforcing what I'm reading, so I'm, I'm happy, because I do this all the time, and I look and think, well, that does, that seems like it makes sense to me. And if it's, if you're reinforcing that, I'm, I'm okay.
Appreciate that.
Next, we have Councilmember Kaprowski.
These signs are internally illuminated. Does Floresco also provide the supplies and materials for the lighting component inside?
Mayor, Council, we actually supply the own material ourselves. So all the LED balls, we do ourselves. All the internal structures, the stuff that falls apart from wind, we do ourselves. Rarely, we use them for services like replacing the door and a few things like that, but all the internal stuff we do.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonjivani?
Thank you, Mayor. When I see the green signs melting like the wicked witch of the West, I'm wondering, what kind of guarantee do we have warranted if these things start melting in three years from now?
The warranty on these signs is a 10-year warranty on them, so to date, we have not had any problem with Floresco coming out and addressing it if it, if it has not met that warranty.
Excellent, thank you.
Floresco comes out and installs them too, or do we do that ourselves? They come install them too?
They install them for us.
Okay. Just because...
And supply traffic control while they're doing it?
Yeah, they do traffic control, the buckets, they supply the signs, installing them, all that stuff. It's easier for them to do it, just because we don't have the manpower to do it in a large scale like that.
Because we're replacing so many. Just because I, I ask because I know that recently we had them on the wrong streets.
Yes, and, and I do apologize for that. They, they put it out that morning, and all of a sudden, we got, you know, millions of calls. I was really fortunate that Floresco was very, you know, they're on top of it. So they had the personnel later that afternoon fix them, so, yeah, that was, my, I'm sorry, so.
No, 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 I, I just brought it up because, you know, it does, it shows that, from my perspective, it was a positive that it wasn't our own staff members going out and putting the street names on the wrong streets. Shane?
So just to reassure you, after it goes through my hands, we, we make sure the signs are correct. Once I install them, I send out my technicians a day or two after they're all done with the templates, and they go through all the signs, make sure they're all like correct facing, all that stuff. They put a check mark, and if they're incorrect, I call Floresco, and they come out a day or two later, and they replace everything that needs to come.
But leave it to Gilbert residents to let you know immediately that they weren't in the right place, right? Councilmember Buckley?
Just have a quick question. Is the installation included in this cost, or is installation separate?
The installation is included in that $6,000, $7,000 price.
Okay.
So yes, it's included in the price that we gave you.
It's included in the 300,000 annually?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's great. Thank you.
I think we are done with questions. Thank you all very much. You did kind of have a posse, Susanna.
Thank goodness.
I'll bring it back to the dais for a motion.
I'll, I can make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve Contract 3250002, a cooperative purchasing contract for $300,000 annually for five years, and cost not to exceed $1,500,000 with Floresco Services LLC for illuminated street name signs, and authorize the mayor to execute the required documents.
Second? I have a motion by Councilmember Buckley, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone. Back to you, Vice Mayor.
I think that concludes the consent calendar.
Did we, did we continue item 17?
Item 17, yes. We need a motion to continue it to the September 10th agenda.
Are you making that motion?
I was going to make, I make a motion to move item 17 to the next council meeting.
Can I have a second?
I was talking about...
We have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Motion passes 7-0. Before we move on, I just, I just wanted to say on item 24, the confirmation of our two judges, Bruce Owens and Casey Mundell, I wanted to give kudos to the Judicial Selection and Advisory Board, and specifically Stephanie Navatney for leading that board. They had some really great thorough conversation, and it was a pleasure to work with all of them. And fortunately, it's one of those boards that only gets called into action when it needs to be used, so they may not come back for a while unless we have a retirement, which we might be expecting here in the future. So I just wanted to throw those kudos out to them. Now we'll move on to the administrative items. Administrative items are for council discussion and action. The first one on our agenda is the fees. Consider a motion to direct staff to publish a notice of intention to increase sales use and bed tax rates for the town of Gilbert, and set the public hearing date for October 22nd, 2024. Kelly Faust is here to do a presentation for us. Oh, and Leah, and Leah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just going to kick this off for us. Thank you, Leah Reinheimer, Assistant Town Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to present information to you this evening on the topic of quality of life in... on the topic of quality of life investments to sustain Gilbert's vibrancy for the long term, and also the proposed funding mechanism to maintain Gilbert's quality of life. This slide represents just a few of the many accolades the Town of Gilbert consistently receives. Many of you are familiar with these accolades. This is indicative of what we are striving to maintain and why we're here this evening. So Gilbert is generally recognized as an exceptionally vibrant community. This does not, however, mean that we are immune to many of the same challenges that communities across the country are facing, including the need to invest in critical infrastructure and resources. The Gilbert Town Council takes its responsibility to safeguard Gilbert's quality of life very seriously so that the town can continue to thrive, not just today, but for the decades to come. And in doing so, avoid the pitfalls of decline that many other communities have experienced. Gilbert's mission is to, is to anticipate not just what is needed for today, but what is needed for the future. And so in order to fulfill this fundamental responsibility, extensive research, data gathering, and community feedback has been conducted and collected to really help inform how best to strategically target Gilbert's investments. And so to walk through all of that extensive research and analysis is Budget Director Kelly Faust.
Thanks, Leah, Mayor and Council. As Leah mentioned, we have done, there's been a lot of research over the decades about the infrastructure that's needed. So I'll walk through some of that infrastructure and then the funding. On the parks and rec side, a lot of really good feedback was provided by the citizens through the master planning effort. You'll notice here that some of that feedback indicates a quarter of our citizens are telling us that our programs are too full and our parks are too full. Our infrastructure is very used and perhaps overused. We love our accolades and we get a lot of good information and feedback, but Gilbert also has some difficult things. We are ranked last among our park systems across the top 100 most populated cities. And recently, there was a study that came out that says Gilbert of 180 cities that were surveyed, Gilbert had the highest percentage of families with young children, but the second fewest playgrounds per capita. And so we recognize that there is, our citizens are letting us know there's a need for investment in our parks' infrastructure. So the infrastructure that's been identified to look at is expanding and developing Gilbert Regional Park and Desert Sky Park, New Recreation Center in Southern Gilbert, establish a riparian education center at the Riparian Preserve, additional splash pads, sports fields, multi-use paths and trails, and additional pickleball courts. There's also a need for police infrastructure, which includes the Advocacy Center. The Advocacy Center is to help those victims of interpersonal violence to be able to get justice, to be able to get healing, and to move on with their lives as best and quickly as possible. We recognize that evidence is a key part of being able to process crimes and be able to resolve those cases. With that, in homicide cases, they are 21 times more likely to be charged if there is forensic evidence associated with the case. On the rape cases, there's 20% more convictions when there is sufficient evidence there. And so this is another area where we look to need improvement and ability to maintain that evidence in crime lab. The Public Safety Building, we have one here across the street. And also there's an overflow or additional Santan substation down at Greenfield. And we, police has done a fantastic job of trying to fit in as many workstations as they possibly can. They are at capacity and cannot find more creative spaces to add additional workstations at this point. In the Santan substation, they have inadequate locker room space. They've converted some of the conference rooms into locker rooms. If you think about, one of our officers wears their protective gear out in the heat in 115 degrees and then puts it in a locker overnight and comes back to put it on the next day. There is some additional ventilation and things that are needed to help that be a positive experience for all involved. So the project overview is for the public safety infrastructure is the Advocacy Center Phases II and III, a crime lab, and then Central and Santan Patrol Buildings, expansion of that office space and workspace needed by those staff. We also need some infrastructure in our, our fire area. This is a picture of our fleet building. We put in fleet infrastructure in the early 2000s, early to mid 2000s, about 20 years ago, and have not expanded it since then, although our fleet has definitely expanded in the last 20 years. So what that means is we don't have enough indoor space to work on all of the fleet vehicles that need to be worked on, especially these large vehicles. So oftentimes, they get parked outside the base. And both our fire and this is our solid waste or our trash trucks. And then our staff are working on those vehicles to repair them, both in and outdoors in the heat. And so we need to expand the space for them to be able to safely work on those large apparatus. As you know, in Gilbert, we have a very strong need for data and using data in decision-making. One of the areas where we use data is looking at call volume and being able to have the lowest response times possible. When we look at adding new police or new fire trucks and response vehicles, we would like to put them at the stations where they will cover the most people and reduce the response times best for the highest number of people. We are not able to do that because those stations can't house additional fire apparatus. So we would like to expand those stations in the high-volume areas where the data indicates it would be most effective for our response times to be able to put them there to improve the service for our fire. We also have a need for some expansion of fire administration space. There is limited space over at the public safety facility now. And in fact, they're, they're temporarily housed over at the public safety training facility. And we need to find a more permanent solution for those staff to be able to work. So the fire and rescue projects include fire admin remodel, public safety and large apparatus maintenance facility, and fire station expansions. There is a lot of projects that were looked at, and Council, you know, you also looked at these. And we've been looking at this infrastructure and deciding what the town needs are with information over the last decade. Council did a lot of work in prioritizing these projects. There is more that's needed, but these that are proposed are the highest priority for the town at this point in time. There are limited options with how to finance infrastructure of this magnitude. We would, some of the citizens have suggested using the rates from the water. Unfortunately, water rates are only used for water infrastructure. And this infrastructure that we're discussing is parks, police, and fire infrastructure, where we do not use any of the utility revenue to, to cover those costs. So the town's two major options are property tax and sales tax. Property tax can be used for one-time projects. When we use secondary property tax, we have to bond for the projects and pay the repayment costs. It's also only paid by property owners within Gilbert. The other option that's been explored is a sales tax option. And sales tax, we're allowed to both cash fund and bond fund projects, which allows us to stretch the dollars even further. It also allows for visitors of Gilbert to be able to help offset the cost of the infrastructure that they're using when they come to visit. With that, Council gave direction to look at a sales tax increase. This includes three areas, sales tax, also a use tax, which is paid by residents and businesses who are doing online sales with vendors who do less than $100,000 of sales within Arizona during the year. And also a bed tax, which is paid by travelers who do temporary lodging, hotels, motels, or short-term stays here in Gilbert. What's proposed is that Gilbert has been at a 1.5% sales tax rate since the year 2000. The proposed rate would be 2%, which would be the middle of the pack for our surrounding peers in the community. The use tax, we currently do not charge a use tax, it has a 0% rate. All of our other peer communities do charge a use tax. And so we would look to match that with our sales tax rate at 2%, which would be, again, middle of the pack compared to our regional peers. The third is a bed tax rate, we're currently at 2.8%. We would look, be looking to go to 5%, which is also the most common rate among the regional peers for that visitor tax. We've been talking about these projects and preparing information for decades. But in December, there was a specific workshop with Council talking about the infrastructure needs. There was, again, discussion in March, talking about how do we finance these infrastructure needs, which brings us today with the instruction that we've been given to do a notice of intent to be able to start the process, to be able to adopt these tax rates. So if Council approves the notice of intent, that will start the public process, will get information out to the public. There would be a public hearing on October 22nd where the public can weigh in. And then that, that night, Council would make a decision on what to do with the tax rates. We would need to notify the Department of Revenue before November 1st, 2024. And then the rates will take effect on January 1st, 2025. The impact to a general citizen is mostly on the sales tax. So it would be 50 cents for every $100 spent, like when you go to Costco or Walmart or spend. And with that, we would be getting the park infrastructure and the public safety infrastructure that our citizens have indicated is important to their quality of life here in Gilbert. The next steps would be to have that public hearing and vote from Council on October 22nd. And then the town will do outreach, starting tomorrow with notice of intent. There will be a website with additional information for the public. There's a GIS map that walks through all of the proposed projects and information Gilbert newsletter and social media. With that, are there any questions?
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions from anyone? I just want to clarify, you talked about property tax, and we kind of skimmed over it. The secondary property tax needs to be from bonds and paid back through our secondary property tax rate. We don't have a primary property tax in the Town of Gilbert. So you can't increase the primary property tax when the property tax, we don't have one in place already. So that was, that was why the Council discussed these other options.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Bon Jivani?
Thank you, Mayor. The bed tax. I assume that the hotel industry is okay with the bed tax?
I would need you to ask them. We did a discussion with the tourism group that met. They didn't provide any feedback about the hotel tax to pass on to you. There were some questions from, about the sales tax with some of the car dealerships, but nobody in the room had a question about that.
So the bed tax are paid by people who come outside of Gilbert into Gilbert? So the bed tax doesn't really affect citizens of Gilbert unless they've been kicked out of their house or something like that, unfortunately, correct?
Yes, and there is a portion of the bed tax that is restricted to tourism-related purposes, which does help the hotel industry.
Okay, second thing, just want to make sure we're talking the same language here. Couple from Glendale drives the Phoenix or drives to Gilbert and has a $100 steak dinner. They're gonna pay 50 cents more, correct?
Yes.
And they're not gonna, while they're here having their dinner, and they're not gonna go to the park and, you know, and use our park amenities, most likely, correct?
Probably not the park amenities. We hope they don't choke on anything and need any assistance while they're here. But our public safety is available in case they did need it.
Okay, so same, same, well, different couple, but they're from Gilbert and they come and have a $100 steak dinner and they spend 50 cents more, but they're utilizing our police, our fire, and all the other amenities that we have. Correct?
Yes, there's, there's not a specific fee for use of parks or public safety.
Right, so it sounds like that our, our couple from Glendale who comes over and has that dinner are actually helping the citizens pay for some infrastructure and things that they're not necessarily benefiting from, but they're benefiting the Gilbert community, correct?
Yes, we love when they help pay for our infrastructure.
Sounds like a good deal to me, thank you.
I'll, I'll follow up with your question about the bed tax. In 2017, 18, the bed tax was lowered just a smidge. And the, actually, the hoteliers came and asked us to not lower it at that time, to keep it the same, because they wanted the funding to go towards tourism, which it can be used for, for the bed tax purposes. And every once in a while, somebody remodels their home and needs to go stay at a local hotel, like I did, and you get to pay that bed tax. But I'm also the person that if I'm going someplace and staying someplace, I'm not looking to see what the tax rate difference is between this hotel and this town and this hotel and this town. If I want to be in this town, I'm gonna pick a hotel in that town. And I think that's where it comes from. Vice Mayor Anderson?
I just wanted to follow on what you were talking about, Mayor, about different kinds of property tax. A lot of people don't understand the difference between the primary and secondary property tax. And part of the reason that we're in the middle of the pack and not on the lower end is because those same cities have a primary property tax that supplements their operations. We don't have that, and I need to make that clear.
I'll go a step further and say we don't have a primary property tax, we don't have a transportation tax, we don't have a library funding tax, we don't have any of the things that we see in a lot of the cities around us. Gilbert does a lot more with a lot less than we have for decades in this community. Councilmember Torgerson?
I wanted to point out, A, we don't have, such as Mesa does, where they increase the cost of water utilities and then feed that to the general fund. And that's why when people are upset about water rates, they're not comparing it to right across baseline, where it's much higher because they're, they're actually paying in to fund, to the general fund. One thing I like about this is that in the end, me, I don't like tax. And I don't think anybody really likes it. But we eventually can get away from property tax, even secondary property tax, if we're generating the right money through sales tax, which is a little bit more voluntary than, you know, every six months getting an Eddie Cook letter. Just is, you know, you, you don't have much choice there. I will be paying mine this week, put it in your budget, I'm paying mine, I know you've got me redlined. And it's, I think that in the end, it's, it's painful to look at. But as you move forward, I think that the actual tax burden turns less to people that are residents, and it shifts some of it to, to people outside of Gilbert. And it also makes it a little more voluntary, whereas I don't feel a property tax, there's any voluntary source on that whatsoever. So begrudgingly, but yes, this seems to make more sense for long-term planning.
Any other comments, questions for Kelly at this time? Thanks, Kelly. Appreciate your time and presentation this evening. Bring it back to the dais for a motion, if anyone would like to make one. Again, this is just to kick off the notice, publish the notice of intention. The public hearing date is set, will be set for October 22nd, 2024. That will be a public hearing where the public will be invited to speak on this item, too. Don't everybody speak at once.
I'll do it, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept it as written.
We have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson and a second by Vice Mayor Anderson. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0, and again, to the public. This is the opportunity for the Council to kick off this discussion under the law in Arizona. It's the only way that this construct, this discussion can move forward, for the community to be involved in the discussion also. So that's what this does at this point in time. Moving on to Item 27, Council Administrative Item, Consider Acceptance of the Budget Report and Contingency Report for the Fourth Quarter of FY 2024. I didn't talk to anybody about a presentation on this. Does anyone need anything on this one? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve Item 27.
Thank you, I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski.
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Buckley, please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Next up, Item Number 28 is Discussion and Update for the Community Engagement Task Force. Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let the Council know that we met on August 12th. The first step in determining recommendations is to understand what's being done today. So we received the following presentations. Our SOR, SRO, which is a School Resource Officer, overviewed their duties and, and also that we have them stationed at junior high and high schools, and then how they coordinate with school officials. We also received a report on overall data on police action and results regarding teen violence, as was shared with the Town Council, including proactive approach to issues at Morrison Ranch. We had a presentation from the Gilbert Youth and Adult Resources, which is located in the Courts Building, which provides counseling for troubled youth and adults based on referrals from the Courts and Gilbert Public Schools. For example, if a teen is caught violating curfew, they may be referred to the Gilbert Youth and Adult Resources, at which time the parents will be called in as well. While this is an extensive program, I wanted to give just a short example of. While this is an extensive program, I wanted to give just a short example of how Gilbert is working with troubled teens in conjunction with our police schools and courts. And I think in even our last meeting, we, I think there was a misunderstanding of whether parents were ever called in, and so this is another example of how parents are being involved in some of these discussions. For the first time, Gilbert Police were on site at all our elementary schools on the first day of school, which was very well received, and principals have shared how excited the kids were and that they would like to expand this more often. Our internal team is looking at a more robust youth engagement program that will come forward in the future with input from the task force. But in the meantime, this is a great example of how we are building those relationships long-term. And we anticipate the hiring of the new community youth officer to be completed within the next two weeks. And actually, the candidates for that position all came to our meeting to get the reports and see what we were doing as well. The Family Advocacy Center Open House was a great success with many nonprofit partners in attendance, along with residents. The center will be a key partner in future efforts regarding not only victims, but how the community can work together to address violence issues, including teens. And our police department, along with 12 other departments, worked with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office to launch the new Report Don't Repost campaign to educate our communities of the importance of reporting and sharing information, including social media videos relating to crimes directly to our police departments. And I'd be happy to bring forward those videos and additional information to the next council meeting during my report, if you'd like to see a couple of those videos and just kind of share it in this setting, so other people might see it that might not take the time to look it up on their website. And the Teen Violence Task Force will begin identifying what we as a community are doing well, what gaps need to be closed, and how to bring the community together to address pressing issues involving our youth. So we'll have much more to come, but that's where we are today.
Excellent, Councilmember Tilke. Any questions or comments for the council member? We purposely added this to our agenda like we did with the subcommittee, so that we could get an update from you every month, because we know that the Community Engagement Task Force is going fast forward to get this accomplished in a very short timeframe. So thank you for that. I love that the candidates for the position all came to the meeting. That's great. And I'd be interested in sharing those videos, since it would open it up to a wider audience, I think, if others are interested in that. I think we have the opportunity to show something here that we have an audience for and then people that go back and watch our council meetings, too, and I know people do, that they get to see them, too. Thank you. Next is communications from citizens, so back to you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We value the participation of our community members and the robust exchange of ideas. While we understand and appreciate the passion our community members bring to these sessions, we must remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. Also, playing of music or showing videos may subject the town to copyright infringement and is not allowed. These practices can disrupt the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others and detract from the respectful atmosphere we strive to maintain. The town asks that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name and your city or town of residence, and then begin speaking. Each citizen will have three minutes.
Okay, nice to see you guys. I bet you thought I was done. Sorry to disappoint you. It was nice to watch the council meeting last week, or two weeks ago, and see all you guys speak with some passion about your stuff that you have, the love you have for this town. I also have that love. I spent 20-plus years serving as a fire captain in this department. I also coached 12 years of youth football volunteering in the community. So maybe you can comprehend a little bit of why I speak with the passion I speak with when I'm up here. Councilmember Bon Jivani, you, you mentioned that five members wanted to review your pay raises before the elections. He also said that somewhere, somehow, staff didn't follow your directions. So who was accountable, held accountable to that? Who in staff was held accountable? It was kind of nice to see council actually be adversely affected by the lack of accountability in this organization that has affected the employees, because Patrick and Leah and Rob and Nathan and Michael and Bob, Cory and everybody in upper management has got away without accountability. They act with impunity. I sent all of you an email and a list of 28 candidates proving how Patrick and Nathan and all the fire department, upper management were complicit in violating state statute and Civil Rights Acts. They did all this while they were pushing their, their employees on training regarding white privilege and the unconscious bias, along with the ODG team spying on conservative views. And that's where your moral, your moral and your morale, excuse me, your morale program or began, your morale, morale problem in the town began. Two weeks ago, a gentleman named Mr. Young brought up proof that Patrick and Nathan are still heavily pushing the DNI Marxist agenda with new and current employees. You just heard from Kelly Faust that out of 180 cities, Gilbert had the highest number of families with young children. Yet you teach your employees that respectful language is partners and not husband and wife. You teach them that they should use they and them. Personally, I find that very disrespectful and offensive to me. The majority of this council is disengaged and out of touch with the community who has voted you into these seats. Do you believe the majority of the community wants you to use partners instead of husbands and wives? Do you believe the majority of this community wants to teach their children to use they and them as plural instead of singular? I mean, excuse me, singular instead of plural? That, that shows me that you're out of touch with the citizens, who are mostly Christian. They are in male and female marriages, and they have children, including many of your staff. Yet you tout the town as a great place to raise family, and you push the DNI lies onto the employees, and Patrick sits over there making his $331,000 a year, not being held accountable by you guys. For your raises, since Patrick and this upper management team support the eroding of American values and by their support of the Marxist DNI ideologies, the answer is simple. Equity means the quality of being equal or fair, and equal means identical in amount or portion. So take all your employee wages, add them up, count the number of employees you have, divide it, and everybody from the mayor down makes the same amount of money. Pretty simple. Boom, you got your DNI. You're no longer just talking about DNI, you're actually being it. You're actually acting in it. And I'll make this quick, I still have a lot more to go, but for obvious reasons, he wouldn't implement that. But he'll sit there and still require the employees to take this Marxist DNI garbage in training. I have other stuff to talk about, but I'll get back to that, I guess, in two weeks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Christina Curso, I've lived in Gilbert for over 17 years. My comment tonight is about public comment. 17 years, probably 15 of those have spoken before this council, and I've always known that our elected officials have valued our community. I do believe you value us. I do, and I see some of your heads nodding. So please don't put us at the end of the agenda. The last several meetings, I've watched women with very little children at home wait till 11, 11:30, and I know we have big agendas and we have a lot of work to do. But the number one reason for government is the people. And so I ask respectfully that you restore public comment to the beginning. Now, I understand that some of the comments were made that, you know, you have these big, you know, contracts and the lawyers come and get paid by the hour. I respect, you know, the budgets of those people who have to have lawyers and lobbyists and things here to be able to move through things that are happening in the town. But I more value families being home with their children. So please respectfully ask that on the next agenda, or maybe one more after that, could you please restore public comment to the beginning to ensure to us as citizens, you value us over anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Good evening. So I wanted to go over, there was a few comments from the last meeting about how there was abuse going on, and I just wanted to touch base on this really quick. Here's the definition of abuse from the law, of, from the Office of the Law, Revision Council, United States Code, it's a federal website. The term abuse means knowing, means the knowing infliction of physical or psychological harm, or the knowing deprivation of goods or services that are necessary to meet essential needs or to avoid physical or psychological harm. Abuse is not a term to be used loosely. Many, many victims have been affected by lifelong effects from abuse. What you are experiencing here with us speaking out is not abuse. It is a direct conversation and pointing out what has happened and what needs to change. As a human, it is hard to hear when we have messed up. It can create a defensiveness in us and a lack of willingness to hear, unless there is humility. Let me share with you a little bit that I have learned in the 11 years of single parenting. I wasn't a good listener, and it is sometimes that there are, it is something that I wish I could go back and change. My kids would point it out, and it took me a time to really see what they were saying. But that required a humility to hear that I may not be the parent that I thought I was. Once I finally got it, it changed my relationship with my kids. It opened doors to conversations and completely changed the dynamics of our home. This is your home. This is our home. Your family has been crying out to you that they are hurting. Yet there isn't humility to really hear. Instead, we're accused of being abusive. Until you, as a council, are willing to hear your community, until you are willing to make changes, until you are willing to hear your own employees speak, nothing will change. This is not abuse. This is a hard reality of speaking truth that needs to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Carissa.
Good evening, good evening. Tonight, I want to say thank you once again to the community for using your voices, as every voice matters. We'd also like to recognize and appreciate the willingness of the Assistant Chief of Police and the Public Relations and Crime Prevention Representative that came to the table with honesty and humility. As a community, we pray that our council remembers that this is a public mental health crisis we have been in for years. This isn't a one-off. We must confront the uncomfortable truths. It's not just the sum of individual wrongdoings. It's the manifestation of societal norms and structures that perpetuate harm. When one member of the community suffers, we all feel the reverb, reverbications. Hurt people hurt people, and the cycle continues unless we intervene. When I say, Gilbert, you have blood on your hands, I use that phrase to reflect as a mayor, council, town manager, police chief, and as a community, so no other family ever has to go through the tragic nightmare that has plagued our community, as it shouldn't be profit over people. We haven't seen investigations in past crimes that could have been prevented and could have prevented other children from being assaulted and murdered. Per administration and operations of the town, the citizens' voices should be the most valued, which places this council as the elected officials below the citizens. The community is just asking for transparency and accountability to create a safer environment for our children and families, versus hearing this isn't our problem, when in reality, this is everyone's problem. Again, let us not be bystanders and commit to breaking the cycle of harm and fostering a community built on love, empathy, accountability, transparency. Together, we can create a brighter future for generations to come, as again, it starts in our homes and it starts with leadership in this room. Rise up, Gilbert.
Thank you, Bridget. Mayor, that concludes the communications.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Moving on to our next agenda, item is future meetings. We have a study session related to meet and confer happening in September, a council retreat item related to the status update of general obligation bonds. And now we'll move on to communications with a report from the town manager. Patrick?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, nothing tonight.
Oh, my gosh, you shocked me. I didn't know. I, I started to go do something else, because I thought you were going to be talking. Next report from the council. Councilmember Bon Jivani?
Thank you, Mayor. I have slides.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm copying Patrick and everybody.
Hey, I started.
And you did it. So I serve as liaison to Chandler Unified School District, but also on the Chandler School District Teen Violence Task Force. And since we have a couple of schools in Gilbert, I wanted to share with you guys some of the policies of the schools, and then I'm going to show you some stats also. So what are the policies that the schools are doing is a mandatory 10-day suspension for any mutual fighting. And then they started consequences for anyone filming fights and posting them to social media. Those consequences depend on what they, you know, how much traction it got, et cetera. But it doesn't mean if they film a fight and give it to a teacher that they're, that they're in trouble. They also implemented color-coded bathroom hall passes, so the teachers and the SROs and the security officers can see that if someone's wearing a blue pass, that means they should be going to the blue bathroom, as opposed to being on the other side of campus, getting in trouble. Then they're also monitoring cameras outside of the bathroom to visualize the number of kids getting, going into the, a certain bathroom. So if they see that a number of kids are rushing into a bathroom, that alerts the SROs and the security officers to send someone in there to see if something's happening. Next slide. And we got some statistics from the 2022 school year to 2024 school year. So 2024 is actually 2023 to 2024. It shows a number of assaults, fights, threats and weapons. Assaults with the definition being that they were unprovoked, it's one kid just hitting another kid. Fights being mutually decided that we're both going to fight each other. Threats are threats, of course, and then weapons. So it looks like from 2020, or 2024, 2023, 2024 school year, from assaults is down 17% from the average. Fights are unfortunately up 14%. Threats were down 14%, and weapons were down 150%. So these are just some of the statistics that we've just started taking a look at, at that task force. Also, on another subject, our dementia-friendly initiative, we're close to officially turning into our, turning in our application. Hopefully, we'll get that done in the next week or so. And then my report for Parks Direct, wouldn't be a meeting without me doing my Parks Direct report. So what's blooming at Desert Sky, Desert Sky Park? A community treasure hunt. Want to be the first to know what's blooming at Desert Sky Park? Beginning September 1st, we invite you to search for hidden, hidden gnomes, painted rocks and other surprises in the park. These hidden treasures will hold a QR code to uncover exciting renderings and amenities that are coming soon. The hunt will showcase the work of talented local artists, with new pieces, new art pieces being introduced every 10 days. The treasure hunt will take place from September 1st to September 30th, 2024, at Desert Sky Park, located on Power Road between Pecos and Williams Field Roads. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else have comments? No? Oh, Councilmember Torgerson?
But wait, there's more. As a reminder, tomorrow morning is the Heritage District Meetup at 8:00 a.m. The meetup is a social gathering organized in partnership with the town of Gilbert and the Gilbert Chamber, aimed at connecting professionals operating within or around the Heritage District. It's not exclusive to that. If you wish to attend, you can be anyone, and you're encouraged to. This meeting will provide a behind-the-scenes tour of the active construction site at Water Tower Plaza prior to the plaza reopening this winter. More details can be found on the Chamber website at www.gilbertaz.com. Also, applications are open for Redevelopment Commission volunteer positions. The Redevelopment Commission advises the town council on matters related to redevelopment area in the downtown, in downtown Gilbert. Applications must be submitted by 11:59 on Monday, August 26th, and information can be found on the town's website under Board Openings. But if you have a chance, please come down tomorrow. If nothing else, chew my ear off about something, but it'll be, it really turns out to be a lot of, a lot of fun, and a lot of people meet new people, and you get to see what's happening down there. And so many people don't know what's happening, and just to see it as it happens, it's, it's a lot of fun. So if you have time, please come down, 8:00 a.m. tomorrow. Thank you.
Councilmember Torgerson, to follow up with what you said, it is a construction site, and everybody has been encouraged to wear closed-toed shoes. It is hot out, women tend to wear open-toed shoes, but I thought you might wear closed-toed shoes, but I thought I should mention it.
I was looking at this open-toed ensemble that, okay, I'll wear steel-toed shoes.
For safety reasons, everyone needs to wear closed-toed shoes. Councilmember Buckley?
I, I don't have any tourism points today, because it is August and no one wants to come to Arizona. come to Arizona right now. I do want to mention, though, that I did a two-day conference through the ASU Morrison Institute that, for public policy. So, and was very, very interesting. I took away a particular point, which I'll get to in the end, but we went over, they had incredible speakers there from all different venues, but the main thing was the status of housing, affordable housing, and then groundwater. Those were the two main issues that we discussed. Quite interesting, I believe they're in the middle of possibly expanding the AMA, you know, that's the Active Water Management Area, and, you know, it's within a certain area, and it's possible it's going to get larger because everything's growing. The, the interesting thing about the water is they're, you know, they're deciding who owns what and who gets what allotment and everything, and, but what, the thing that I thought was quite amazing is they're now trying to study who actually is going to own asthma, astro, what is, let's see, the astrospirit, spirit, water, another, atmosphere water. So when the water is coming out of the rain, you know, out of the cloud, who's going to own that? Because, you know, it may, there's a lot of water that falls in Colorado, so that's why we have the Colorado River, and we all share in that, pay for it, of course. But I thought that was quite interesting, that they're now trying to decide how to determine who gets the water that actually falls out of the cloud, and is it stay where it's at. So, but very, very informative. They're trying to do, talking a lot about affordable housing, and where that's going right now versus apartments is affordable homes, and there's rental home communities. And I learned during this that there is a rental home community being built in Gilbert. It's out, I think, out by Gateway somewhere. I don't know. Were you aware of that?
We have several mental homes.
Yeah, yeah. So, and what they are is they're smaller homes, but it allows, you know, our first-time home buyers and our, our people that are either transferring or whatever, to at least have a yard, they can have a yard for their dog, a little place for their kids to play. So it was quite informative, and I've been to these before, so I enjoy keeping up with where we're going and what our future is going to be. And that is it for me today.
Thank you, councilmember Buckley. Anyone else? Seeing none, report from the mayor. If I could have, see what slide you pull up first, June. Of course I have slides. That's, it wouldn't be like the same. So this is my last two weeks, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, that I was reappointed to the seven-member Maricopa Association of Governments Executive Committee, which I appreciate the appointment by my peers on the MAG Regional Council, which is made up of 34 members across the region, and to continue the opportunity to serve on this committee. The executive committee handles the business of the regional council that arises in between meetings and also serves as the finance committee. And as you can see, it's been getting busier the last few days as we get into mid-August and moving into September. Our schedules will definitely pick up from here. Friday, I attended the East Valley Chambers of Commerce Annual Luncheon with presidents of the chambers, chamber board, chamber board presidents, and then intergovernmental directors, Rob Boer, attended with me, and mayors from Carefree Cave Creek, Scottsdale, Tempe, Queen Creek, Mesa, Chandler, Apache Junction, and Gilbert. And one of the topics that we discussed was also affordable housing, and how can mayors affect that? And a lot of it really comes down to it's market-driven. And if you have the same house in two different cities, in the East Valley and the West Valley, you're going to see a difference of over $100,000, and some of that is the cost of land, because the East Valley is a very popular place to be, and so it's very difficult for us to make a difference when it comes down to market-driven items. June, do you want to put up the Stock the Classroom? Stock the Classroom finished up this last week, and all of these locations served as locations that you could drop off anything that you were donating to this drive, and Santan Village even donated $2,500 check that they came in with on Friday. I stopped by there as students from, as I like to call it, Gilbert Chandler Community College were there, separating all of the items. They take every, every box and package that comes in, and they separate it out, and they literally count all the boxes of crayons, all of the notebooks, everything that's donated, and then they separate those out into boxes to go out to the two districts, Gilbert District and Higley District. Next slide, June. And they collected $18,000 worth of supplies that equates to, if you see here on the notes, 7,792 pencils, 112 backpacks, 222 spiral notebooks, highlighters, everything that students can use. But this isn't a drive that goes directly to the students. This drive takes it to the district and puts it in their warehouse space, so that when teachers need these items, they can ask for them and bring them into their classrooms. An average teacher spends over $500 out of their own salary for their classrooms each year, so this is to help them. Is that, is that all my slides? That's all my slides. Then Friday night, I attended the Williams Field High School Meet the Team Night. Assistant Chief Angstead was there from the Gilbert Police Department, and we did a little selfie with some football players. The team does this every year, and they invite people in from the community to attend, and they introduce every member of the dance team, the pep squad, the cheerleading squads, and there are well over 100 football players between freshman JV and varsity, and every kid gets to say their name and introduce themselves, and it's a lot of fun. It is hotter than blazes in that fieldhouse, but, and they've definitely outgrown the space, and need a new sound system, we talked about that Friday night, but the coach is amazing, and it's just a fun opportunity. Then on Saturday, we joined the members of Gilbert Fire and Rescue, along with their families, and some members of the Gilbert Police Leadership Team. They school shopped with 52 kiddos from our Gilbert District Schools. Patrick shopped with Rich Ganley and one young lady and her mom. I watched them pick up at least three pairs of shoes, I was looking at them. And Shane McCord, Dr. McCord from Gilbert Public Schools, was there, and I, it's just such a heartwarming event to witness every year, and I will say that the smiles on the people shopping were bigger than the smiles on the kids' faces, if that's possible, but it's just really lovely to see. And we had a very special young lady, who is the daughter of a deputy chief with the Gilbert Fire Department, Whitney Connor, who also ran her own fundraiser. She's in high school. She ran her own fundraiser and was interviewed by Fox Ten and Man. She interviewed better than I do on TV. I really was so impressed by her. Her parents were standing by watching her, and I couldn't help but get a tear in my own eye just watching this young lady and how amazing she was. I see chief's face back there, and yeah, thank you, chief. It's an amazing, it's an amazing event every year, and I have to give a shout-out to Jean Spurkey, because she just does an amazing job putting together, but everyone else that came out Saturday morning, Debbie Dana, the town manager's assistant, was there. Chief Duggan's wife was one of the people checking people in, and just an amazing opportunity. And then this afternoon, before we came down for our first meeting, I had a visit from members of our Hindu and Indian community that came and gave a few of us these lovely tied-on bracelets to recognize Universal Oneness Day. I'm not going to try to even pronounce what that really means to the Hindu community. I would never be able to say it, but for them, it resonates with one of the core ethos of Hinduism, and it means that the entire world is one family, and I thought that was a lovely way first to end this evening. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.